Call the meeting order, please. Call roll.
Ms. Kahoon.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. O'Neal. Dr. McFadden. Mr. Rickman.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District, can address the board with any questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry here this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, and concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Rooty Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. My heart is full now because I understand we're losing one of our foremost school counselors. Mrs. Monk, Shirley Monk, has been a part of this district with my younger children, my grandchild, and my great-grandsons. She worked with me and the community. She had a relationship with not only her students, but their families, the community, and organizations around this city in to get resolution and help for their students and their families. I found out about it when I called about an incident that is going on now in this school and when she told me she was no longer involved as a counselor to help the student. We're losing our foremost person in this city, I mean, in this school district. And if we can't see it, you're losing the best. When she came in, she worked her under her normal contract and everything, but there were some years where she did the job of the whole school. And she did that for quite some time until she found out where she is now. I think this district needs to think about what's happening. You're losing teachers, and now you're losing your foremost person in this district for our students, our families, our community involvement, and everything that needs to be done in this community. She worked with everybody. I don't care whether you're blue, black, white, or grizzly gray. She worked with everybody. And if she didn't know how to reach out, she always reached out for people in the community to help these students and their families. I just had to come up and say something. You don't know what you're losing and what you're missing, but I don't know what to tell you because not only are you losing her, you're losing your teachers as well.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Stephanie Cagna. I'm an alum of Mount Clemens Community School District, Go 99. And also, I have the privilege of working at Seminole Academy as a paraprofessional. I won't point fingers at whose fault that is for me being employed here, but I appreciate it.
Your address, please, ma'am.
I'm sorry?
Your address.
My address is 24899 Valley Avenue, East Point, Michigan, 48021. And the reason for my being here today is on behalf of Principal Bethel of Seminole Academy. She had asked that I provide invitations to the board members for our heritage family night, which is on the 28th of February. All board members are more than welcome. And also, I had asked the, excuse me, I had asked the secondary complex as well as King Academy and Seminole Academy if they would be interested in having the board members come and share a story or a part of their, an experience in their life that helped change their lives for the better, to help stimulate student growth as well as connectivity within our community. And I look forward to being able to spend, at the very least, family night with each and every one of you. And if I have your permission, I would like to hand out the invitations. There are QR codes in order to RSVP. You can scan them with a smartphone, and you will be able to, it will proc an email that you can send to those, to the administrators of the schools. And I again thank you so much for your time and your efforts, and I hope that you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda still open for citizens' comments.
Good evening. Jason Monk, 262 Cambridge Drive, Seminole Hills, Mount Clemens, Michigan. Shirley, sad to hear you moved on from Mount Clemens High School because I always felt the connection from you and the students. I would like to continue our partnership, and if I can help in your new school district, please reach out to me and let me know. Jamal Davidson, Human Resources Executive Team Leader, Target Shelby Township, and he's also an alumni of Mount Clemens. Operation School Bill, Weekend Snack Bag, Christmas Giving Tree, Thanksgiving Day Basket Program, partnerships with local churches, Target Corporation, Optimist Club, local businesses, private citizens, coordinated Back to School Bash, taught an elective life skill class this year in the high school. After-school Coordinator, Summer School Coordinator, Summer School Teacher, Field Placement Supervisor for Wayne State University and Oakland University, Homeless Liaison, provider of daily snacks for students, provided clothing closet, shoe closet, supply closet, and toiletries closet for the students in this school, in this district. Mentor teachers. This is just some of the jobs in the program that she overseen outside of her normal social work job duties. We lost the best social worker this district has ever had. She was compelled to resign due to the fact that she would have to provide services to the entire district once again, in which she did previously for 10 years by herself. Also forced to provide services to a student that she felt unsafe around. An administrator told her, and I quote, "You knew this was coming." Mr. President, they knew Ms. Monk resignation was coming, and it was not about money, it was about her peace of mind. This has and will always be about the students. With Ms. Monk leaving, the student body will suffer. We have lost two of our only social workers in the span of 30 days. There's a problem. We need, we need a team of MSWs now. Ms. Monk will be greatly missed, and we wish her luck in her future endeavors. Who would take over all the programs that I mentioned to keep the run, and keep them running for the students and their families like Ms. Monk did? Who would supply students' daily needs, both physical and emotional, like Ms. Monk did? Having part-time people in place doesn't work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Good evening. Nelson Jackson, 615 Wellington Crescent. I would challenge the members of this Board of Education to contact or talk with your school attorney regarding an evaluation that was not done in a proper timeframe, at the proper manner. If you talked to your school attorney, I'm certain that he would tell you that you're going to end up on the wrong side of this. If the superintendent has documentation that that evaluation was done within a proper timeline, proper timeframe, I would not be up here. But unfortunately, it seems to be some denolatory tactics going on of which I'm unaware. But again, hopefully this board will not end up on the wrong side of this. It makes no sense. I believe in justice, fair play, honesty. That's not happening here. Why this board is not acting on this is beyond my imagination. Again, if you're not aware of what's going on, then you need to find out what's going on and make some kind of decision. It's going to end up someplace, and it may not be at this board. If you don't, do not make the proper decision, somebody else will. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Agenda still open for citizens' comments.
Good evening. Roxanne Brown, 590 Clinton River Drive, Mount Clemens, 48043. I guess I can add that I'm an alum of this prestigious school, and I will celebrate my 50th anniversary since the year I graduated next year, God willing. I should say that I'm a journalist, a former journalist, so I'm always trying to connect dots and get information. And it's been very difficult to get some information. As a substitute teacher at Seminole, I've been subbing at Seminole since 2019. Of course, I took a hiatus when we had the pandemic closures, but I have been a committed sub there. And I came late to education, but I really enjoy subbing and also teaching at Wayne County Community College as an instructor there. So I just have some questions about some information that seems to be lacking in public places where we should be able to find it. One of the things that I'm wondering about is, where is the district's retention rate for teachers? Is that a public piece of information that we could find? The retention rate of teachers, it kind of piggybacks on what has been said about the decline in being able to keep good personnel related to Mrs. Shirley Monk. And so I'm looking for that information. And where is the district's human resources or personnel handbook housed? Where do you get the policies for the district? Where is the compensation policy and the HR policies and procedures housed? Normally, that's information that you can gain access to on the website as a visitor or certainly if you are an employee of some sort, you can, you can put your hands on that. But I don't, I don't think it's readily available. I want also to know about health and safety policies because those are very important to me in the schools and living most of the time with an 87-year-old mother. So I need to know, where are your health and safety policies? How can we gain access to them and commit them to memory and understand what the policies are here? I mean, I have a whole list of questions here, but I know from the last time that I took the mic that I've got three minutes, is it? So I won't belabor the point, but what I am getting at is that there are sunshine laws that apply to information that citizens should be able to access. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Agenda still open for citizens' comments.
Good evening. Rashida Hammond, 290 Clinton River Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 48043. I just have a few questions to follow up on from Mrs. Brown. How many principals has the Board of Education hired and dismissed over the past five years? And how many superintendents has the Board of Education hired and dismissed over the past 10 years? And thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none? Not anybody on Zoom? Seeing or hearing none? Moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, item five, under the consent agenda action items, approval of the minutes A, 1, January 18, 2023, regular meeting; A2, February 1, 2023, special meeting; A3, February 9, 2023, committee of the whole session; A4, February 24, 2023, special meeting; 5B, approval of bills for payment; 5C, approval of new hires; C1, elementary, elementary school counselor. The chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Collins. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
I just want to give a correction on the February 14 special meeting. I thought, I think you said the 24th, so it was the 14th.
Thank you. That's, my eyes didn't deceive, but it is, in fact, the 20, the 14th, not the 24th. It's printed as the 14th. I misread. Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor regarding the consent Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, the motion carries. Item six, resolution for district appointment of a trustee and risk management coordinator to the Middle Cities Risk Management Trust. Mr. Lavender, filling in for the superintendent this evening. Is there a recommendation? In the past, the board, for this position, the board has normally named the superintendent as the coordinator and the assistant superintendent of business as the trustee to the Risk Management That would be my recommendation, and I say positions as opposed to names. So I would recommend that the Board approve a resolution appointing the superintendent as the trustee and, and the assistant superintendent in charge of business and finance as the coordinator to the Middle Cities Risk Management Trust. I'll put that in the form of a motion. Is there a second? Second, Member McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
What is, what is this trustee and risk?
We are, we are in a consortium of middle cities, a group of school districts like ours, and we're in a consortium. And it's part of, being in part of that consortium, you have a trustee and a coordinator of that for to represent.
And what would they do?
That I don't know. They represent the board at the risk, at the Middle Cities meetings and at the Middle Cities Risk Trust Management meetings.
And the risk management is for?
It's again, it's with the consortium of the Middle Cities Consortium that we are the district.
But risk management.
It's insurance company.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing or seeing none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, informational items. Item seven, Curriculum and Personnel Committee, A, Section 98B Goal Progress Report Data Mr. Lavender.
Hello, everyone. I'm David Lavender. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Human Resources. This evening, I'll be presenting our goal progress report regarding Section 98B. This is a compliance presentation regarding our progress towards two goals, one focusing on ELA and English Language Arts and one focusing on math progress. The compliance piece regarding 98B is, a presentation has to be given regarding our goal progress at the first board meeting in February, and then again, no later than the last day of school. So we will have another update regarding our students' progress in regards to ELA and math by the end of the school year. Our first goal focuses on English Language Arts. By the end of the 22-23 school year, each school and district will show growth in reading or ELA achievement as measured on NWEA MAP growth for K8 and local assessments 9 through 12. Our teachers will use a variety of strategies and assessments to support meaningful student progress towards mastery of reading and English Language Arts academic standards. In reading and ELA, results from benchmark and local assessments will be continuously discussed and analyzed by staff. What you see here is a comparison from the 21-22 school year on the left, and on the right is this year's data, fall to winter growth, actual growth compared to the projected growth on NWEA Language Arts. And these tables are referencing Seminole Academy, kindergarten through fifth grade. Each blue bar represents the actual growth. The orange diamonds represent the projected growth that NWEA establishes based on fall assessment scores, and the blue bars reflect winter actual data. As you can see here, last year at Seminole, on the table on the left, our third graders met or exceeded the growth projection. And this year, in 22-23, you can see our fourth graders exceeded the growth projection. The blue bars indicate that all grades did demonstrate progress on their ELA or reading NWEA assessments, but it was the fourth grade that exceeded the growth projections. When we moved to the middle school last year, the 21-22 school year, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders did not meet the growth projections from fall to winter assessments in the area of English Language Arts or reading. This year, seventh and eighth graders met or exceeded the growth projections. From fall to winter, our sixth graders did not demonstrate growth. They did not decline either. Our high school last year did not demonstrate attaining the growth projection in ninth, 10th, or 11th grades, and 12th grade actually declined. This year, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders all exceeded the growth projections from fall to winter on the ELA portion of the NWEA assessment.
Mr. Lavender, can you explain how the RIT growth is developed and how it's measured?
Sure. So NWEA uses the RIT as their unit of measurement. So like an inch, centimeter, gallon, NWEA uses RIT as their measurement. The growth is actually determined on the fall assessment. When students take their assessments and they earn their score, they use their own analytics to determine the expected growth for each individual child. NWEA then creates a grade level growth projection that's defined by the orange diamonds that are on these tables.
So, Mr. Lavender.
Yes.
So each school district is defined differently on their growth expectations?
Correct.
So what does the RIT, what does RIT stand for?
Yeah.
I know I'm full of football, actually, didn't I?
I would have to look it up. I don't know. I've always called it a RIT for 15 years, so I can look that up and get that to you, though.
Don't worry. I can look that up myself.
Part of the NWEA data provides us with projected proficiencies on standardized tests. If we look at our students' performances, the NWEA analysis shows us that the blue bars on the right gives us the projected proficiency of our students on the M-step. So even though our students are demonstrating growth in all the grade levels on our previous slides, they're still below grade level when compared to the expectations on the state assessment. In the grade levels that had the blue bars that were at or above the orange diamonds, our students are showing that they are narrowing the achievement gaps. So in turn, as we continue to demonstrate that type of progress, we will see the blue bars on the right increasing. And this is the same type of graph focusing on the PSAT, projected proficiency for ELA for eighth graders. Is my three minutes up? Just kidding. ELA reading analysis and plans, fall 2022 to winter 2023. Fourth grade met or exceeded expected growth. Seventh through 11th graders met or exceeded expected growth expectations. All grades except for 12th demonstrated growth. Fourth, seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders demonstrated progress that will help to narrow the gaps in achievement because they exceeded those growth expectations. Last year, only third grade demonstrated this type of growth. So we're seeing more progress in more grades this year compared to last year. Our second goal focuses on math. By the end of the 22-23 school year, each school and the district will show growth in mathematics achievement through measurement on NWEA MAP growth for grades K through 8 and local assessments 9 through 12. Our teachers will use a variety of strategies and techniques to help students to demonstrate meaningful student progress towards mastery in math. We will continue to work with our staff to analyze data, and those discussions will focus on instructional decisions to improve outcomes. We have the same type of graphs that were shown for ELA for math. As you can see here, last year, the 21-22 school year for Seminole, grades kindergarten through fifth grade, our third graders exceeded the growth expectations. Fourth graders met the growth expectations. This year, we have first, second, third, fourth, and fifth that are all touching that orange diamond, with second grade actually exceeding the growth projections pretty substantially and a slight advancement of the projection, the projected growth in fourth grade. When we look at the middle school, last year, our eighth graders far exceeded the expected growth in the area of math. Our sixth and seventh graders did show growth last year. They just didn't meet or exceed the growth projections. This year, our seventh and eighth graders demonstrated tremendous growth and far exceeded the growth projections on the fall to winter NWEA assessment for math. Last year at the high school level, ninth grade exceeded the growth projections. 10th graders showed growth, but they were not at or above the level of the projected proficiency. 11th grade did grow more than the projected growth, and our 12th graders declined. This year, all four grades met or exceeded the growth projections. This year, all four grades met or exceeded the growth projections with our seniors far exceeding the growth projections in math. Again, this graph tells us our projected proficiency on the M step for math in all grades three through seven. And here's our projected proficiency on the PSAT for math for eighth graders. From fall to winter, twenty-two to twenty-three, second, third, fourth grade met or exceeded expected growth in the area of math. Seventh through twelfth graders met or exceeded all expected growth targets. This year, second, seventh, eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders demonstrated growth that demonstrates progress to narrowing the gaps in achievement. While last year, third, eighth, and ninth graders demonstrated that type of progress. Part of the compliance piece is to define how each grade scores on NWEA for reading and math. And we compare that to the norms for NWEA. In the upper right corner, we see the twenty-twenty math norms for each grade. The reading norms are in the bottom right corner. And on the left, we have two columns, one for math, one for reading. And that defines each grade level's average RIT on the fall test for both math and language arts. This is another breakdown, same data. We also have to present it, broken down by school and grade. And lastly, we have an average RIT score for each of our demographics, English Language learners, economically disadvantaged, gender, special education, and race or ethnicity. So now what? For curriculum instruction, what we know is that tier-one instruction or instruction at the classroom level is most important. Teachers, effective teachers, have the biggest impact on student achievement and students obtaining the progress that is necessary. So our tier-one instruction ensures that each student has access to the grade level content. It is our job to make sure that our students have access to standards and benchmarks defined for them at their grade level. We have to get them caught up, so that means we have to teach them at the level of their grade and fill in any gaps that are present. All of our new teachers and mentors have gone through professional development regarding quality assessment. At Seminole, we are focusing on implementing Wonders Training and Bridges Training, so ELA and math curriculum training. We are in the process of setting up a K-five science curriculum adoption committee that will have teachers from both levels on it as they go through a process selecting the new science curriculum that we will implement here, which will help to improve student learning experiences and their achievement. We have ongoing professional learning communities that focus on data analysis and having those discussions on instructional design and how to help those students who are struggling to help to improve them, but also to create extension opportunities for those students who can move ahead. We have instructional coaches at elementary level and at secondary who work with teachers. We have an MTSS process that is a very strong system where teachers are guided to analyze local data, classroom data, to make decisions to determine how they can help those students who are not progressing at grade level. As an administrative team, we have established classroom look fours. These classroom look fours focus on making sure that teachers are teaching bell-to-bell. So from the start of class to the end of class, maximizing all and every minute of instruction. We are focusing on classroom management techniques and strategies and providing support for teachers to continue to strengthen those skills. We are looking for the use and teaching of academic language and vocabulary and making sure staff sets the stage for learning. Clear goals, clear agendas, clear timelines, et cetera. We have worked with our district improvement team, school improvement team, mentors and mentees to really refine these look fours to make sure that everybody is progressing to implement these look fours in their classes. I referenced tier-one instruction earlier, and that's making sure that every student has access to grade level content. We have to set high expectations because when we set high expectations, students will rise to meet them. This is a quote that states, "To accelerate learning, students at every grade level must first receive strong tier-one instruction with an evidence-based scientifically researched core program or curriculum focused on essential grade level skills and behavioral expectations. Without access to a strong tier-one grade level instruction and content, student learning can be delayed, creating gaps in academic knowledge and skills." We have to continue to strengthen our tier-one instruction so all of our students have the best opportunities to progress. So what continued in regards to curriculum instruction? We've provided responsive classroom or restorative justice training through Roy Burton. We have provided quality assessment training to all mentors and mentees. We have four sessions coming up in the next month where all staff and all teachers and staff will get trained in Kagan techniques, which is student engagement activities. Not only will teachers go through the learning process of those techniques, but Kagan representatives will come to our district and they will coach teachers as they practice implementing these student engagement techniques. Again, we have ongoing professional learning communities through our late starts where teachers have data-driven conversations, where they analyze data, and where they collaborate to make sure that they are implementing supports for kids who are struggling and making sure that that tier-one instruction is at grade level. We have coaches supporting staff through coaching cycles where they work with teachers to make sure that their instruction is on point or that they have the skills and techniques to handle any behavioral issues. Our elementary teachers are going through letters training, which focuses on the essentials for teachers who teach reading and spelling, phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. Teachers are also going through Orton Gillingham, which is more of a tier-three instructional support for teaching reading for those students who struggle the most. And we also have teachers kindergarten through second grade who are going through the McCombe Literacy Modules to ensure that our K through second grade curriculum is strong, appropriate, and at grade level. So now what? We'll continue to focus on increasing student achievement in reading and math. One of our school improvement goals reflects providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We do this through unpacking standards and benchmarks. We will build off of the work that others have done before us where we will audit current curriculum maps, establish common vocabulary, define strong pacing guides. And as we work with our new PAL through our partnership agreement, we will put in place the accountability process to make sure that we do all of this with fidelity. We also support our students through various after-school activities and summer programs, whether they're academic or enrichment. And we will continue to provide our staff with summer professional learning opportunities. And those opportunities are aligned with our school improvement plan and district improvement plan. I mentioned earlier that teachers have the biggest impact on student success, and good teachers make a difference. When it comes to student performance on reading and math tests, teachers are estimated to have two to three times the effect of any other school factor, including services, facilities, and even leadership. What's also noted is research shows that high-value-added teachers also influence long-term outcomes such as graduation, college attendance, and earnings for our students. It is important that we continue to support our teachers, to provide them with the tools and techniques and skill sets so that they can do what's right and what's best for our kids. Nothing is more important, other than our students, than our teachers. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. My email address is lavandard at mtcs.org. Any questions, Mr. McFadden?
And when you go back and look at twenty-one, twenty-two, knowing that that is the first year that we went back in person from COVID being a remote learning environment, what consideration, if you know, that was taken into account in developing the RIT growth? Because data shows that some students lost a year or even two years during that period of being remote learning because it didn't work for all the students. So if you're aware, you may not, they might not been a standard deviation or something used when they develop, you know, the gold points.
Yeah, the most recent norms were established in twenty-twenty as a result of the pandemic. So what NWEA does is every few years, they will take the scores of hundreds of thousands of students all across the nation and establish the norm. And that was done in late twenty-twenty as a result of the pandemic. So it was early on through the pandemic, but there was definitely an impact. And what we saw in the norms from twenty-twenty versus the previous version a few years earlier is those grade level norms are actually lower. So as students regain better standing in regards to student achievement, as NWEA, they'll probably redefine those norms this year because it's done every three years or so. We'll see those norms go up. So it's our job, those orange diamonds will actually get higher, so we have to play catch-up even more.
And this goes from year to year. In twenty-one, twenty-two, a second grader would be a third grader in twenty-two, twenty-three. Have we been able to determine what was it about that level? Say, for example, in math in the third grade? And then when, you know, when they went to fourth grade, they continued to do well in math as opposed to the second grade, twenty-one, twenty-two. They didn't, you know, come close to reaching the gold point. And then that would be the third graders, and they exceeded it.
Correct.
Or reached it. So do we have any?
I'll give you an example of what that looks like. Just a couple hours ago, we had a district improvement team meeting. And one of our agenda items was to go through a data dig on the NWEA. But this was at the classroom level, not a district summary. And we had the Seminole School Improvement Team members in a breakout room. We had the Secondary School Improvement Team in their breakout room. We provided them data to analyze. And then they had to take their summaries and put it on this online, you know, sticky note board. And when they went through our data protocols, because we have a very well-established data protocol that staff members use all throughout our district when analyzing data, they were able to focus on the concerns of kindergarten. If you look up there, the gap at kindergarten is very wide, right? It's probably the widest. So if we can have those kids as close to that orange diamond as possible, it allows every year after that to build off of being at grade level instead of playing catch-up the whole time. So we actually went through talking about it. And this was Seminole teachers, high school teachers, admin from the district, all having this conversation about what can we do? And part of that conversation, at least for kindergarten, focused on, are they even able to use a mouse and a cursor? Because most kids at that age find motor skills. Or being able to use a mouse, it's not something that they do. They grow up on their parents' phones or iPads. So we're going to see if we can implement spring testing on iPads or Kindles where you can use your finger instead of a mouse. Sometimes the barrier may not be academic. It could be that fine motor piece, at least at the kindergarten level. So that's just one example that we talked about earlier. When it comes to grade levels, you know, when we establish themes, last year, third grade was way above the growth projection. This year, fourth grade did pretty good. So is that that cohort? Or is it a really good teacher who in third grade boosted them up? And then that fourth grade teacher had a stronger cohort to work with. So as we go through our MTSS process and look at classroom data at the classroom level, and we have teachers from that entire grade with an interventionist and a coach working with them, we dig deeper into what instruction is working, what interventions are working or not working, and then we work to redesign as needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Threw a curveball at you earlier.
Yeah.
Asked you what a RIT was. As you said, it's just a measurement unit. They just call it a Roush unit, RIT.
Thank you.
So I'll do that for you.
I appreciate that, Dr. McFadden.
It was a Roush unit.
It was named after the person who created it, right?
Pretty much.
So this growth is a result of putting a plan in place with our teachers. And our teachers and our coaches and interventionists implemented this, and that's why we're seeing this growth. So we have improvement because of the staff.
Absolutely. And I think it's very important to note that the staff are designing instruction based on grade level standards and benchmarks and holding the students accountable to their grade level expectations. That alone captures ninety percent of our kids approximately just by having the proper expectations and the proper follow-through. So then, as that becomes stronger and stronger over time, our interventions can get cleaner and more direct because there's less kids who are falling behind. And I referenced earlier, there's been a lot of work done here, a lot of great work done here in the past. We have to audit past curriculum work, maps, scope and sequence, common assessments, common vocabulary. So part of our partnership agreement, we're writing in this audit and revision phase to make sure that our curriculum is staying caught up with current expectations and then making sure teachers teach at that grade level.
Any additional questions, comments?
Is there a student felt right here?
Yes. On, here, I'll point.
Total number of growth events. So those are the kids who were captured both in both testing sessions.
So the growth events is your student?
Correct.
And what impact do you think the lack of, or the decrease in students had on their ability to pay more attention and that the teacher was able to work better with the students?
It's my understanding that class sizes are pretty consistent last year to this year. So I can't speak to last year, but this year, our teacher to student ratio is probably in the mid twenties. And, you know, on average. That allows teachers to get to know kids, get very personal with the learning, and to establish relationships, which helps with that learning progress as well. So I don't know.
Well, your sixth grade went from fifty-two to thirty-nine. That's a significant drop. So I would think there would be some, you know, with the decrease in classroom sizes, I mean, that.
It's very interesting because research speaks to class size not having a major impact on learning. And the greatest impact on learning is actually an effective teacher. And class size is way low.
Where is that research at?
I can find it for you.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Absolutely. This has been a battle in my past regarding class sizes, so I can, I have a lot of experience with that.
And what's the classroom size for each grade that we have right now?
I could get that for you.
Yeah.
I would say the average class size is in the mid twenties.
Mid twenties?
Yeah, but I can get you exact numbers.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Mr. Lavender.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight, business and finance. Are there any questions regarding the financial reports? Or any questions regarding the contract listing? I don't know if you, superintendent comments, or you sitting in on superintendents? That's, that's, that's sick.
Do you want me to comment tonight?
I don't know. You're, you're, you're sitting in the chair, so we'll give you the opportunity.
Thank you. First, I'd like to start off, Ms. Beal sent a letter to our families last evening regarding the tragedy that occurred at Michigan State University. I would just like to offer deepest sympathy and support to the students, staff, and families of Michigan State University. I'd also like to remind our families to always seek out help in any times of distress or struggle. We have many resources that we are connected to. Students are concerned about any threats or serious situations, we have the OK to Save program that we are connected to. We've recently just established a relationship with Care of Southeastern Michigan to implement an employee assistance program. And with that partnership, we also established a relationship for Care of Southeastern Michigan to provide supports to our families and students. So I would also like to put that out there. We are committed to providing a safe environment for our students and our staff. I, I often tell people, I want to go home every day and hug my wife and kids, and I want the same thing for our students and our staff members to go home and hug their families. So please take some time to appreciate your kids and your families, and please let us know if we can help you with anything. It is Black History Month this month. Thank you to Stephanie for providing invitations to the Board of Education. Seminole Academy is hosting what will be an amazing event on February twenty-eighth at five-thirty P M. There will be lots of wonderful activities happening. Part of the connection, we're trying to strengthen our relationships and connections between Seminole and Secondary. So Ms. Taylor is taking her dance class to that event where they will dance and perform and engage with our students and families at Seminole. So we're very excited about that. Secondary is hosting a spirit week this week. And on Monday, it was Black History Month colors. On Tuesday, Valentine's Day, it was red, pink, or purple. On Thursday, it was, or will be, Natural Hair Day, and Friday will be Twin Day. There are many classroom activities happening throughout our district in honor of Black History Month and to celebrate Black History. Many writing activities, art activities at Seminole and here at Secondary are happening. Our culinary students here are learning recipes. They have a guest chef coming in who is going to teach the class how to make a corn chowder recipe, and the chef grandmother passed down that recipe. So we're excited about that. We have lots of other activities happening here at Secondary where research activities, writing activities, and other events are happening. Yesterday, I had the privilege and honor to attend the Macomb Diversity Summit with about fifteen students, ten from high school and five from the middle school, along with Ms. Terry, our high school counselor, and Mr. Hannah, our accountability officer, dean of students here at the Secondary Complex. I was also fortunate to co-facilitate two sessions with Carol Sullivan from the Interface Center for Racial Justice. She had asked me to co-facilitate with her. We ran two sessions on the story of our life focusing on joy. We had thirty to thirty-five students from throughout the county in each of our sessions. The students either brought in a picture or drew a self-portrait, and all kids drew their self-portrait, defining the story of their life focusing on what brings them joy or what joy did they bring to others. So it was really great having a positive experience with students from our schools here and throughout the county. At lunch, Ms. Terry, Mr. Hannah, and I, along with Phil Gilthrust from Anton Art Center, sat with our students from Mount Clemens, and we worked through an action planning template where we gathered input from our students as they talked about what types of things they would like to see happen here in school to celebrate diversity, to bring awareness to various causes, and to make positive cultural change. So as a result of that, we have a meeting set up in the next couple of weeks where we will start engaging with our kids to gather their input to see how they can help us to improve opportunities for them while strengthening our culture. And yesterday was Valentine's Day, so why not celebrate some love? I was talking to Carolyn Brownlee in the kitchen the other day, and she was telling me how much she loves preparing food for our students who are accessing food after school as they can get dinner before they go to their sports or clubs. I saw Jay, our head of maintenance, and he was talking about how much he loves plumbing tasks and problems, and he was fixing plumbing issues throughout our district today. At our district school improvement team, we had a connector activity. We tried to break the ice before each meeting just to have some positivity, and I put it out there to the staff to, to define what they love about their job. And I heard from staff members who said, I love living in the community where I teach and seeing my families when I walk my dog or when I go to Dairy Queen. We had an administrator who said, I ran into a, a student who was working at Five Guys, and the student was equally as excited to see her as she was. We heard from another teacher who said she loves creating opportunities for our students to engage socially. Ms. Joseph coordinated our homecoming, and she's organizing our field day, and she does many other things throughout the school year to positively engage students socially within our school and community. So it's always important to share the love. We have a lot of good things happening in Mount Clemens Community Schools, and we need to focus on some of the great things. So I hope you can find something that you love about our school district, just like all of us do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, item ten, committee reports, or is there any information coming out of the business committee?
Oh, we have, we have a meeting on the twenty-eighth. The budget will be done by then, and, and Ms. Oz is on the ground and ready to go. So we, they needed a little bit of time.
Understood. No, no coalition, no educational foundation. Thank, thank you, Mr. Lindbergh. Critical personnel, the chair is not here. Policy, anything on the horizon?
Well, you know, February, that month, that something might come down the pipeline. I reached out to my main members last night. We can send a meeting soon, as soon as I get the information. Put them together, okay?
Thank you, sir. There was not a legislative committee. I don't have a report, which brings us to then item eleven, board comments. Ms. Kahoon?
I just want to pass on my deepest sympathy, condolences to anybody who's lost a loved one in the Michigan State situation. Hopefully, we can get mental health under control in this state and in this country. It needs to be focused on immensely. And in terms of people that are dealing with things within the district that are broken, I would love for any one of you to reach out via email and just have a conversation. I think communication is quite honestly the biggest thing that we could do with each other is to talk and figure things out together. I know that I don't have all the answers, and I think collectively as a board, we don't have all the answers, but I think if we can work with alumni, residents, teachers, faculty, maybe we can come up with something. So I just would ask that you reach out to me just to start a conversation and brainstorm something because I would like it to, to get better. I really want it to get better for everyone involved, families, kids, residents. The history of this city should not be what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Oh, first, I'd like to say, um, thank you, Ms. Lavender, for that presentation during our committee meeting last week. It was great seeing the positive progress that our students are making. I'll say great kudos to our teachers for putting in the very hard, hard work, hard on the line, and particularly in math, as that was one of my favorite subjects, as many of you know. I, I would like to say also that change takes time, and I think that once we all come together, have the hard, tough conversations, and to edit and complete a plan, I think our district can get better. But we have to have those conversations to actually do that. I'm looking forward to, in a few months, our senior graduation. Seniors, it might feel like it's a few months away, but it comes very quickly. So get ready. I'd like to say also, thank you all for bringing in our, our new members, me and Sheila, and really mentoring us to really try to figure things out and try to figure everything out when it comes to everything that comes to being a board member. Happy Black History Month. And in regards to the MSU incident, it's really time to stop just giving out thoughts and prayers. We have to do something about it. As a fellow college student right now, I'm tired of feeling like hopeless. I'm tired of, tired of feeling like we keep doing the same thing over and over again where nothing gets done, whether we're in public elementary schools, college campuses. We feel like the same thing is being done over and over again with no resolve. And I'd like to say, um, just thank you to our staff, everyone from teachers to janitors, to our cooks. You guys put in a lot of work, and you should, you guys should be appreciated. And that's all for my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Collins?
First, I want to send my prayers out to the entire MSU community, the families. I think it's really important to remind our parents to have the conversation about school shootings, and I say that because when my daughter was involved in a school shooting situation, I, as a parent, had never had that conversation. I left that to the school. The school did not educate me on how to have that conversation. I think we lack in educating not only for our staff, who is many staff that is unfortunately put in that position to protect our kids, including our, our local police officers, how our community needs to react to that. So I think it would be great, a step, step in the right direction to educate the parents in the community if that situation were to happen here, what we have in place and what we need from them at that time. Because when the moment happens, it, everybody goes nervous, you know? I want to say, I hear the things going on in the district. I, I do hear them. But for everybody out there speaking negatively about the district, when you're in those conversations, please say one positive thing about our, positive thing about our kids and the good things that are going on here. They deserve the recognition instead of the constant negative. We are aware. If you don't know the positive things that are happening in the district, then you are not here enough. I'm, I'm happy to see this many people at a meeting, I want to see this every meeting. But our kids deserve positive recognition for their achievements, and they are here. The other thing I want to say is that I am very excited about the things that we do have coming down the pipeline here because there's a lot of people working very hard and very late nights to ensure that these things happen, and I'm excited about it. The kids are excited about it, and I know we're all excited to be able to announce those. So other than that, those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. Walker?
Well, I, like my other board members, send my thoughts and prayers to the families and students in MSU, but Dante's right, thoughts and prayers are a beautiful thing, but we have to do something more. I'm not sure what that is, but we have to do something more. So last night, as I was with my middle school students, I was called into a classroom to speak to them because they had questions about MSU, and my job is religion-based, so as I was speaking to them, there's a little seven-year-old skipping down the hall, and nice and loudly on her way to the bathroom, she said, "It's so easy, be the light and do what's right." And seven years old, I stopped her in the hall after she came back from the bathroom, and I said, "I heard what you said, and you're so right." And she said, "That's it, that's all you have to do, be the light and do what's right." And I said, "I'm going to say that at my board meeting." And I said, "Because you are so right." So that's my comment for tonight, be the light and do what's right.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
Thank you, sir. I know a lot of the comments, and I know I came a little bit late, but I had an idea what the comments would be. A lot of it was about processes, processes, procedures, and what's been missing, what's not being right. So to follow up on that is to make sure we're doing or following our processes that goes along with policy. There's no excuse for that. If the policy is not followed, then that's on us. So we will do the research on that and figure out what's going on. Talk next about MSU, Michigan State, and all the other violent activities that took place this last week, because Michigan State was not the only place that took the big hit, but the one that's closest to home. My nephew goes to Michigan State, a few of my colleagues' children go to Michigan State, so I was receiving phone calls all last night, or the last couple days. The biggest thing about Michigan State, we do need to take action and to the point of not only on one side or the other, but situational awareness. And a lot of people are just laxadaisy, or as they would say, complacent. After being in nine eleven and serving in the war after nine eleven, we were never complacent, and now we are more complacent than ever. I don't know why, but it is what it is. But we need to step up and realize that complacency is not where we need to be, that's even in public education, because we are being complacent. We're being complacent by letting our processes not follow the process supposed to take with policy and administration guidelines. We're also making our complacency when it comes to public locations and places or public displays, and that's everything. Couple weeks before Michigan State, the activity that took place this past week, which was tragic, I think a lot of people seen the news when there was an active shooter called to multiple school districts. I don't know if anybody recall that. That there should have been a red flag to our state and to the communities around them that something was might or could be coming down the pipeline. As a terrorist assessment, when I've been on my military tour, things of that is a red flag. If we was on a military base, we'd have been DefCon Bravo, Charlie, or Delta, we'd have been locked down. There'd been a situation where eyes open, see what's going on. We didn't drop the ball, but we dropped the ball to the point where tragedy took place. We was complacent. Situational awareness needed to take place, and the conversation needed to be had. Now, this school district, one of our goals is to produce, produce lifelong longer, lifelong learners. When I say produce, because we get to the fact that we don't know what's our product. The children is the problem. That's what, that's what our job is, to produce lifelong learners. So who's the customer? Parents and the stakeholders. That's. That's customers. So we need to listen to the customers and find out what's wrong, what's going on. And continue with the production of lifelong learners, but we got to find out what the customers want. Ms. President, those are my comments. One more thing.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, because I don't want to forget this, all right?
No problem.
There's never too much prayers, okay? I want to make that sure because I know some say, "Yeah, prayers are good, but we need to stop praying and take action." I will say this, and I will say it to the day I die. I will never stop praying. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Anytime that there is a killing, whether it be out in the open universe, whether it be through war, college campuses, high school campuses, elementary schools, preschools, the country gets at arms for a few minutes. We send out our thoughts and our prayers to the families and the loved ones. And like we've said around here, then we go back to being complacent. It's a tragedy wherever it happens. If it happens across town or across the country, the tragedy is no less, it just hits you closer when it hits closer to home. We're close to or just past the anniversary of the Oxford shooting. That's two mass shootings in the state of Michigan within a course of a year. I think I read something earlier today that it's February the sixteenth, and we've already had sixty-four mass shootings in this country. It is something drastically wrong with this country and how it handles assault weapons. The name says it right there, assault. Those type of weapons are geared for war. They're not geared for hunting wild animals or two-legged human animals. They are designed to kill on a mass scale. And until this country opens its eyes and does something about it, tragic to say that this is not going to stop. Because with the amount of social media that's out there twenty-four hours continuously, there's always going to be a copycat. Somebody's going to say, "Well, they shot up that many people. They got that kind of recognition. I want to do something to get more recognition." That's sometimes people's mindset. Mental health is a major crisis in this country. In this state, you recall Governor Engler shut down all the mental health institutions and put a bunch of people who needed assistance and help out on the street. And those people are still on the street. And coming out of COVID, where people were locked up, locked down, this country, this state, this community, no one has dealt with that adequately. Because how do you shut people up in a room, in a house, in a closed environment, and then all of a sudden, okay, you can go back out? That has something to do with one's psyche. And again, I've heard my colleagues say, "If you need help, seek help. We have help facilities right here on this campus through the Henry Ford Hospital." So if you know anyone that needs some kind of mental health, that has mental health issues, I don't like using mental illness. That has a very negative connotation in my mind. So I refer to mental health issues. And we all have mental health issues. Others are just more prominent, and they deal with them differently. So as a district, as a country, as a community, we have to stay vigilant. Because it doesn't matter how prepared you are, you're not always prepared for that situation it may have. You could be prepared for ninety-nine different scenarios, and that hundred-and-one scenario comes up, and it looks like you weren't prepared. So all we can do as a district is to stay vigilant. Anytime this board has taken, when we had reports of students coming to school with weapons, we take it very seriously. When we get calls or threats of violence to be happening in one of our school buildings, we take it seriously. We close the campus because we rather err on the side of precaution and safety than not. I would rather keep kids home to check out a situation as to put them in danger. So this board, this district, anytime we get threats, any kind of, any nature of bomb threats, there's a gun going to be in the building, we take it seriously, and we cooperate with the proper authorities. We have protocols in place of how we deal with that. And again, all we can do is stay vigilant. I would like to say good luck to the lady bathers and the battling bathers as they conclude and they wind down their regular season. They're probably into the conference playoffs now, and they're getting ready to head into the MHSAA playoffs. And I wish both the girls and the boys' basketball teams the best of luck. Good luck to the Mount Clemens Competitive Cheer Team. It's a brand-new organization group this year. The first couple of games, they had maybe seven or eight young ladies. Now I think they're up to like thirty-four, thirty-eight. All of those young ladies that participate in that program are eligible grade-wise, or otherwise they would not be able to compete. So kudos and congratulations to the Mount Clemens Competitive Cheer Team. It's males and females. So if I said young ladies, I'll correct myself to the members of the team because it's both males and females on that team. And good luck to them as they compete in their conference. Remember Collins mentioned some exciting things that we have going on here. We're trying to, and we're in the process of getting the HVAC program, a credit program. We will be the only district in the county that has such a program. So we're really excited about that. And kudos to Ms. Collins for bringing that idea to the board and working with the board and the administration, putting the right people in the right place to make your vision and your dream a reality. And kudos to you for your energy and efforts in that endeavor. Also, we have television production that we're trying to get as accredited classes. And kudos to Mr. Lennanberry for his many years of leadership in that program, award-winning program, I might add, over the years, and continue to be an award-winning program. And last but not least, I heard the comments coming from the microphone during the citizens' comments. My former colleague, Mr. Monk, could have still been up there, or others could have still been up, talking about the attributes and the contributions that Ms. Shirley Monk has provided to this district for over twenty-three or twenty-five years. And I would just simply say in closing that Ms. Shirley Monk will be tremendously missed in this school district. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Colorado, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at eight forty-nine PM.
Seven forty-nine.
Seven, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.